Thank you, everybody, for coming to our board meeting today. We will be starting off with our invocation from trustee Butts.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask for your continued blessings upon St. Petersburg College. Allow us to recognize the challenges in this world, in our institution, but grant us the strength and wisdom to focus on helping improve the lives of all that enter our doors. We thank you for the opportunity to meet today and pray that our work will glorify you. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diving in, we have some recognitions this morning. Dr. Williams.
All right. Ms. Thaddeus Franciskiewicz.
They have to give me the instructions.
I know, me too.
Sorry, Thaddeus.
So good to see you.
I apologize.
It's okay.
It's great to see you.
Thanks.
So don't beat me up if I mispronounce your last name. I'm going to do my best. Thank you. Whereas Thaddeus Franciskiewicz, an instructional support specialist and faculty member, began her St. Petersburg College career as an instructional assistant on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus in October 2006, helping students with computer applications. And whereas Ms. Franciskiewicz later became an instructional support specialist for writing in the Learning Resources Department and helped launch the Innovative Writing Studio on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. Whereas Ms. Franciskiewicz, an accomplished scholar, has an Associate's Degree in Humanities and Liberal Arts from Niagara Community College, a Bachelor's Degree in English and Technical Writing from the University of South Florida, and a Master's Degree in English and Creative Writing from Southern New Hampshire University. And whereas Ms. Franciskiewicz helped create and develop numerous and lasting learning resources programs for her students and colleagues, including the Summer Circle of Reading and the Learning Resources Magnifying Momentum Awards. She leaves a remarkable legacy to inspire and motivate those who follow. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Thaddeus Franciskiewicz and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 18th day of April 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, Thaddeus Franciskiewicz.
I just want to say that it's been quite an adventure working here at SPC in meaningful and always innovation and collaboration with my colleagues. It's always been wonderful to grow with them and to come up with ways to, you know, develop programs and projects for the success of students. And it's been a great growing experience for me, and I loved it. So thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Excellent. We're going to take a picture. We're going to have to replace this. Can you guys look around this way so you can see the picture? This will be a fun. We'll get it right. Yeah, all right. I was just making sure. So if we could have Darrell come forward. You know that we've been focusing on improving HR and moving things forward. We just want to share with you two of our newest hires who's coming in to help us get things moving. Sit down.
Good morning. Trustee Kidwell, board, Dr. Williams. I'm coming before you today because we have been trying to get the right people in the right place and the right position here in our HR department. Today, I want to bring forth one of our new hires, Ms. Donna Bolich, who's our new Associate Director of Talent Acquisition and Onboarding, which is a fancy way of saying recruiting. So I'm going to bring Donna up to just say a few words.
Welcome aboard, Donna.
It's so great to be here today. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I am so excited to work under Darrell's leadership and to join the HR team to really move the department forward and look forward to partnering with everybody here to really bring the best talent onboard for us. The one thing I did want to share with you all, I've only been here now for around a month, and I spent years and years in hospitality. And one of the reasons why I spent so many years in hospitality, aside of just having a passion for the business, was really because the people, and they were special. You know, there was such a warmth and, you know, just genuine hospitality, and I didn't know if I would find that again moving away from the industry. And the people here are just so incredible. You know, you have something to be proud of. Everybody that I have encountered has been not just welcoming, they've been encouraging, they've been understanding, and you just really have a very special team here, and I'm very proud to be associated with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So the second person we brought aboard was a Human Resource Information Systems Manager. You guys know that we have had issues with our actual HRIS system, so we felt that it was necessary and important for us to actually get a person in this position. We have here Ms. Christina Edgeworth, who's our new HRIS manager. I'm going to bring her up to just introduce herself.
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to be part of SPC and part of Human Resources here. I am born and raised in St. Pete and did attend the SPC Dual Enrollment Program, so I'd had a very strong connection with SPC. So it's just a privilege to be here. I did receive both my A.A. and my Bachelor's Degree from SPC. So I'm coming off of 11 years at the YMCA of Greater St. Petersburg. So I'm just excited to be part of this moving forward and getting in there and really doing the best work that I can to bring new processes and different things to the college and excited to be part of Darrell's team, and just thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have a lot of comments, but I will say, the last time we got together for a board meeting, we went to Tallahassee the next day, and it was a little bit of a different experience this time in that instead of us roaming the halls and chasing everyone down, most of the representatives came to us, which was nice. So we sat in a room and listened to Dr. Williams chair her board. She did a great job, as always, and it was just a really good experience. I mean, simply because the money was kind of already in the budget and we weren't having to roam the halls asking for it all day. So that was a great trip. I don't know if anybody has anything to add on the Tallahassee part. The last part I want to highlight is graduations upcoming. I know for the board, that's kind of a really fun time of year. I know for everybody here, that's a great time of year. So we will all be participating where we can, and I look forward to it. I may go to the Tarpon Springs graduation if I can pull it off for the St. Pete Collegiate High School this year, as well as our regular Tropicana affair. So that's all I have. Are there any comments from other board members?
Mr. Chair, real quick. Sorry, two things. One is, actually, three. One is the Tallahassee trip. I heard it went very well. I'm glad to see that we are working very hard to make sure that we continue our success with budget items and being budgeted in the state budget. Conference is coming up, I think, this weekend. You'll see where we are in both the House and the Senate, and when it may not match up, but that's a good thing. That means you're almost guaranteed to be in the budget. So it was a good trip, and I've heard from several folks. I followed up when I was in Tallahassee with a lot of different things, and I've heard from several folks that St. Pete College is doing very well in the budget process and on the policy front. So you all, as a staff and a college, should be commended on that because that takes a team effort. That's just not an individual. Going to Tallahassee, it's a lot of wheels turning over the course of the year. So, Dr. Williams, to you and your staff, a good job on that. I agree with the graduation comment. I just want to say thank you to all the faculty and staff and everybody who works at St. Petersburg College because it takes a hard, it's a hard drive all year to try to get to the end of the year where you have some, a little break. Most of you won't be long because you go right back into summer school, but thank you for, I don't know if we'll have another meeting before we're out. I think we have a workshop or something like that. But just want to say thank you to everybody in the staff. And then, Dr. Williams, please pray for the Moody family. I know you knew them well, I know them well, and Steve had a big loss in his family, and he's been an intricate part of this college, especially for the board members. We wouldn't have any of this stuff. I would not know how to work any of this. I know he gets tired of me calling him and saying, "Steve, I don't know how to do this." But he lost his brother, and we have known him since we grew up with that family, and so I just want to ask you all to pray for him and his family. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustees.
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank everyone again who attended and who helped organize the Donors and Scholars Luncheon that we had last month. It was a fantastic event. There was a lot of people from our community there, and I really want to just thank Anthony Walker and Christopher Silva, who are the two students. Bless you. Who are the two students who spoke at the event. They were fantastic, and I think everyone was moved by what was said, and it was a great reminder of what we do here and what our mission is and the lives that we're affecting. And then, I'm excited for tomorrow. The Board of Trustees is getting together with the Foundation Board for a little event that I think is long overdue and should be great to get us all in the same room, get to know each other a little bit better. So thank you all who are attending that as well.
The luncheon was a tearjerker, as usual.
I heard it was phenomenal.
It was, yeah. Impressive students. Anyone else? Are we on to Dr. Williams?
All right. Well, you guys cut a lot of my stuff short, so I get to brag on our students. Our SPC Model UN did it again. They attained the Outstanding Delegation Award at the National Model UN in New York. This is a coveted team award. Out of 140 schools that participated, only 24 institutions received this award. Indeed, SPC tops such schools as West Virginia, Wichita State, USFL, TCU, and Texas Tech and Syracuse. So congratulations to our Model UN team. Also, three of our titans were spotlighted. They were in the spotlight at the April Florida College System Student Government Association Conference in Daytona, at Daytona State. Clearwater Campus Student Government Association President Alina was elected 23/24 Region Two District Coordinator. St. Pete Gibbs Campus Student President Matthew Oliver was elected the 23/24 Region Two Assistant Coordinator. And Seminole Campus St. Pete Government Association Historian Michael Ballard not only received his wings for the Florida Leadership Training, but was honored for having the best digital scrapbook at the conference. Our Ignite students, 20 of our Ignite students, that's the partnership with FAMU and SPC, they attended the inaugural transfer student preview. They were able to make connections with FAMU staff and deans. They had a chance to spend some time, and two of our students were admitted on the spot. The SPC Titans Cyber Security Club was one of eight teams out of a total of 34, from Southeast qualifiers to advance to regionals. At regionals, they placed second in advancing to the wildcard round. CCDC Collegiate Cyber Defense Competition is one of the most prestigious cyber competitions in the country. And finally, from students, Ella Baum, the Collegiate High School Gibbs student, presented at a local science fair and won Best in Animal Sciences and Best in Fair. She treated ticks with fungus. I might have said that wrong, but something like that. She went to state and won fourth in the animal science section and was awarded a scholarship to, is it FIT? And it was valued at $84,000. For our esteemed faculty and funeral services, we're proud to say that at the April 11th meeting of the Commission on Accreditation for Funeral Services, SPC was granted the highest reaccreditation status of seven years for their recent site visit. The program received four commendations for program administration, administrative support, dedication of faculty members, and financial support of the college. There were no recommendations. This program is recognized across the nation as one of the best of 58 programs in existence. That is my report.
That's it? That's all?
That's it. That's it.
The meeting is now open for public comments. Do we have any? We do not. The public comment period is now closed. Next up, we have the review and approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Kanza?
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustees, Dr. Williams. The college's bargaining team continues to meet with the full-time faculty. So far, we have seven tentatively agreed to articles. Our next session's on April 28th, and we had a session last Friday on the 14th, and we'll be scheduling a shade meeting shortly to go through some of the articles so we can get the board's guidance.
Perfect.
Thank you. Onto our presentations, we have a technology presentation from Dr. Renard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before Dr. Renard starts, if you recall, about two years ago, we surveyed the college family on how we could do better working with them in two big areas that the college identified. One was improved technology, and the second was communication. And we're focusing on those areas, and so Dr. Renard is here today to share some great news on our progress and where we are in improving the technology experiences for our employees and students here at SPC. Dr. Renard.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Kidwell, members of the board, Dr. Williams. I'm Pat Renard. I am the Vice President for Information Technology, honored to serve in that role since August of last year. Before I begin, I'd like anybody from IT that's in the audience to stand. What I'm about to share with you could not happen without these individuals. I have a great team, and we're doing great things. This is what I want to cover. It looks like a lot, but I'm going to move through it very quickly. My goal is to give you a picture of our current state of IT and a glimpse into the short term in terms of where we're heading. So historically, IT has been made up of these five areas, or we call them domains sometimes. Enterprise Application Support, so that's our student information system, our HR system and our finance system. Those are PeopleSoft. PeopleSoft is owned by Oracle. So that's a team that supports those, as well as a lot of subsystems that integrate with those three systems. The Technical Support Services Team, that's the team that is supporting all of the college family on the campuses and locations. They also support all of our students and employees with the technical help desk, and they are largely responsible for the technology that you see in board meetings like this. Information Security, that's a relatively small team, and obviously, their job is to ensure that we're keeping the student information and the employee information as secure as possible, using security awareness training, continuously monitoring our systems, making sure that we are compliant with a lot of regulations and employing best practices around information security. Infrastructure, nothing happens without infrastructure. They're the backbone. They do the blocking and the tackling kind of work. They're the foundation. So it's the telecommunications, networking, Wi-Fi, ensuring that we have Microsoft Teams, Microsoft Office, that users are properly authenticated on our systems. They support the data center. They are responsible, as far as the IT area, for our disaster recovery planning. So that's infrastructure. Data management, that's the area that really focuses on providing data to our external entities, especially at the state level, at the federal level, a lot of, especially around payroll, finance, and HR. They also are responsible for a lot of reporting on audits. In October, we added institutional research to IT. So IR was under Academic Affairs. Now they are under the umbrella of information technology. And Institutional Research, they do a lot of the data gathering for our grants. They do some state reporting, but I think the bread and butter of what they do, I know the college family appreciates their good work, is all of the reports, the internal reports that they do for data decision-making. So when Dr. Leal Troth or Dr. Zemack come and they talk to you about enrollment or student success data or student demographic data, all of that's coming from institutional research. And then, in January of this year, we added Academic Technology. So this is the team that supports our learning management system. That's where faculty and students come together online. That's where all the grading's done, all the quizzes are taken, all the discussion posts are submitted, et cetera. They also support about a dozen other systems used by faculty and staff at the college. So we now have all of these as one IT, so some of the benefits of doing that realignment increase synergy, better communication, potential efficiencies that I'm starting to see, and some vision alignment. So being relatively new in this role, doing a lot of reading and research, and I came across this survey, CIO.com, this is a recent survey, with over 800 CIOs responding to this survey, they were asked, "Which activities do you spend your time, your focus?" And these are the top three. Information security was 47% of the respondents said information security. 40% said improving IT operations and systems performance, and 38% said aligning IT initiatives with business goals. I found this fascinating because, as I reflect back on my last nine months, this is really what I'm spending my time and my focus and my energy on. So I want to provide a little context about where we are, and I thought a SWOT analysis would do that. I'm not going to go through every one of these items. Happy to address any questions that you have about these, but I'm just going to pick out a few. So I would say a strength is the dedicated team. We have a lot of team members that have been here quite a long time. They are dedicated to the college, love the mission of the college, they've got a lot of institutional knowledge about the college, and they've been through some lean times in IT. And so I'm very happy and blessed to be able to lead that team. I would say data analytics, as I just mentioned earlier, as far as institutional research, that is a strength of the college, led by Dr. Fozzy Allen Nasser. The IR team is really looked at as a leader in the state. They often present to the state on data and how to use data for decision-making. And I think, as I said, the college family appreciates the good work that they do. In terms of weaknesses, I'm going to talk about the service desk. I have a slide on this where I'll talk a little bit further about this in the presentation. But our current service desk, and in particular, the ticketing system, is not where it needs to be, and we're in the process of fixing that situation. We do not have any formal governance for IT, and I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes as well. In terms of opportunities, I think the talent that we have within the ranks of IT, there's some great opportunities. They are stepping up, they're bringing new ideas and innovation to the table, and I'm very appreciative of that. In terms of threats, I will say that our aging enterprise solutions is a threat, so I mentioned that we use PeopleSoft. We have been with PeopleSoft for over 20 years, and I met with PeopleSoft and Oracle executives a couple weeks ago. They did tell us that they're going to support these enterprise systems through 2034. That means they're going to, each year, they're going to give us tax updates, they're going to provide financial aid regulations, but I don't think they're going to be innovating the product. So we need to be looking forward. Where do we want to be five years from now? And look at other options down the road. So this is a graphic from Infotech Research Group. Infotech is a, we partner with them. I actually meet with a former CIO as a consultant. He consults with me, as well as two others on my team. But this shows, a simple graphic that shows the maturity level of IT, from struggling to make, you know, to meet basic services, reliable services, all the way to the top where an IT organization is actually transforming the organization by bringing innovative solutions that align with the strategic goal of the organization, and that's where we want to be. So where do we fit? This is where, this is where I see us. While we do have pockets where we're excelling, and I mentioned the use of data analytics, as a whole, I think we're somewhere between providing support, a reliable infrastructure and service desk, and trying to optimize. So we have not quite optimized, and we have a long way to go. So that's a top priority for me in terms of our business application, making sure they're more reliable and they're optimized. So I mentioned a minute ago that information security was top of mind with many CIOs. I dare say it's probably top of mind with many CEOs. I know Dr. Williams and I have had many conversations about information security in the last nine months. And so we do not have a formalized information security program. So we have a lot of pieces. We have a new information security officer who started with us in November, and this is his top priority, and he knows it, and by June, we'll have that buttoned up. But we are doing a lot of things. We just need to codify it and have it written in one document so when we do get an audit, we can show them exactly, this is our plan for information security. So we're doing security awareness training with our employees. We are doing phishing exercises with our employees. Recently, we started to encrypt outbound email if that email, if we detected an email that it contained personally identifiable information, such as date of birth, credit card number, social security number. And recently, we've started to encrypt the hard drives of laptops that belong to employees, belong to the college, but given to the employees in case those laptops are stolen or lost. So we're doing a lot of that, but it just needs to be codified. One of the things I've also challenged the information security officer with is One of the things I've also challenged the information security officer with is changing the culture with the college family about information security. And that can't just be his job. So I kind of, I think it's similar to the fact that, you know, as employees, we are all recruiters for new students to the college. We're ambassadors and trying to recruit students. And really, all of us have a role to play when it comes to information security at the college. And so that's why we do the training and we're trying to elevate the awareness of how important it is for everyone to be cautious with all of the phishing and spam and just following best practices. We're engaged in a lot of compliance and audits. We just went through a two and a half month cybersecurity framework assessment. We came out well with that. We're about to go through a Graham Leach Bliley audit in the next couple of months. So that's a big part of this role. We've added some bench strength in one of the key areas where, you know, we had one expert and we didn't have a lot of backup. So now we've got some backup in that area. And since 2017, with Hurricane Irma, we have moved a lot of our mission critical systems out of our data center and into the cloud. We still have a little bit of work to do there, but, you know, that helps with disaster recovery and security. I want to talk briefly about a few short-term wins that we've experienced. We, in the fall, rolled out multi-factor authentication. I'm sure you're all familiar with getting that text with a six-digit code to log into your bank account. That's what that is. We just rolled that out for all faculty and staff in the fall. One of the things that I said, we've got some talent in the ranks, one of the ideas that came through the ranks was we were manually applying upgrades to a lot of our infrastructure servers. And someone raised their hand and said, you know, there's a product that we can buy that will automatically apply these updates to our servers. We were spending weekends, people actually working weekends to apply those patches or upgrade, updates to the servers. So that has been, you know, a time saver for us for sure. We've deployed over 2,000 virtual desktop infrastructure, or VDI endpoints. So we are going into our classrooms and our labs, in our common areas, like in the libraries where we've got banks of computers that historically we've had desktop computer and replacing them with a VDI machine, which is what we call a thin client machine. It's got some horsepower, but it just doesn't have the horsepower of a desktop. But we're doing that at about half the cost of a desktop, and that's working out well. We have a couple more systems that we are going to be migrating to the cloud in the next year, and we will be rolling out MFA to students next month. So we have dozens of projects in progress. I'm not going to talk to you about those projects, but I do want to talk about four kind of higher-level overarching goals that we're working on, that we want to complete in the next couple of months by the end of the fiscal year. So you'll see the goal, how it aligns to our strategic goals and the timeline. So the first is to establish IT governance. So we have not had an IT governance body or group in over 10 years. So in January of this year, we formed ITAG, the Information Technology Advisory Group, that consists of members from all divisions at the college, provost, associate provost, deans, associate deans, AVPs, directors. We have a student seat on the committee or on the governance advisory board. So the role of that group is to help prioritize requests to come into IT, because there are limited resources and there's, doesn't seem to be limited requests. We get lots of requests. So trying to help focus the requests that come in, listening to stakeholders, being a champion for IT, just some of the work that that group is beginning to do. And that will be ongoing. So we meet monthly, and I used to sit on that team years ago and found that valuable. I think it's important to get the stakeholder input. The second one is to garner stakeholder input. So we will begin by issuing a survey or launching a survey to the entire college family later this month to get their feedback. Once we get their feedback, ITAG, the governance group with my leadership and my leadership team, we will then have a mission, vision, value, strategic planning workshop to take that feedback and do some of that planning. Because we don't have a mission statement for IT or vision statement or strategic plan for IT yet, but that's in the works. I mentioned the fact that we don't have that information security program, so that will be done by June. That's important for a lot of reasons, financial vitality being one of them. And then transforming the service desk. So the new ticketing system, we're working on that implementation, that will also be launched in June. That will give me better insight into how we're doing on the help desk when tickets are issued. Once we close a ticket, it will also provide a feedback mechanism for staff and students to tell us how we did in servicing them. So as I mentioned, I don't have a mission statement for IT yet, but if you were to ask me what's the mission of IT, I would say to leverage information and technology to deliver the best experience for students and employees. And we would do that through IT stakeholder collaboration with these values. Accountability, transparency is very important. When we make a mistake, we're going to own it. Improving our progress with these values. Being nimble is important to me. So change is always happening in IT, as you can imagine. But priorities within what we are asked to do can change too. So I want my team to embrace that and have change be a core competency for my team. And then lastly, to focus on strategy with these values, to be very intentional about what we do, making sure that it aligns with the college's strategic plan. I heard this phrase recently that distractions often masquerade themselves as opportunities. And sometimes the only way to discern what's an opportunity is through the lens of your strategy. So we don't want to chase after the newest, shiniest thing. We want to make sure that what we're doing aligns with the college's strategic plan. And we want to continually improve, and our best is yet to come. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions. I have probably 100 comments, but I won't, I won't remember them all. I try to take notes. The first thing I'd like to say is, like Trustee Givens always says, and I may steal this under here, as much as we don't like to think of it in this way all the time, we are a business. And this stuff is crucial moving forward. I know there's business owners out here, we all are involved in business on the board, and the IT component to what we're doing here, I mean, this is extremely impressive. So, and to have done this in the last eight months, and I know your team is amazing, this was really impressive. The SWOT analysis was extremely detailed. I assume this is an ongoing process with a living, breathing, it'll just keep getting better. But, you know, like we've done with the budget over the past however long, you know, we are a business and these are crucial details to, you know, I haven't seen a report like that on technology in my four years. So I just want to commend you and your team. That's, I wrote a lot of stuff down, but that's what it boils down to.
So I'm constantly reminded any time Dr. Renard presents that I wish he could run my life. Because in my time on the board, I've attended pathways conferences with academic affairs. Now moving over to an operations side, just thank you for your leadership and the team is all there. They've always been amazing. And to bring all of these people together in a common focus is exactly what each, we've watched over the past several years, Dr. Williams take each department kind of independently and do this. And so we just appreciate your leaderships. Like Chair Kidwell, I wrote down a lot of things, none of which are my bailiwick, so I won't even try to comment on it, but I did want to say thank you for your leadership here.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Trustee Givens, uh, Trustee Stonecifer. Dr. Renard, thank you for the report. I guess my question revolves around looking forward with what you know now to get where we want to go. Do you think this is best utilized through different types of technology and becoming more efficient that way? Or is this a matter of getting more people under the IT umbrella, hiring additional employees, that sort of thing? Or is it a combination of both?
From where I sit today, I don't think we need more IT staff. They may disagree with me. But I think we've got to get sharper. I failed to mention a point. I glossed over it, and I apologize. For years, we have struggled to hire for vacant positions in IT. Because of your work and allowing us to do the compensation, compensation and classification study and implement that last July, that is, with the exception of one or two positions, that's no longer a problem. We are competitive. So I think it's just more, we need to get better. We have to look at our technology solutions and make sure they are cutting edge. And changing our ERP systems, the PeopleSoft, that's a big ordeal. Colleges take three, four years to do something like that.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a quick comment.
A question. First of all, Dr. Renard, great job as usual. I have, I just was thinking back in my mind, geez, I've sat through four presidents at this college, including Dr. Furlong, and watched how we evolved to get to the end user or customer, right? And it is, it is, it's good to see that you have taken, and the administration has taken the concept and made it a lot, streamlined it a lot, making sure that the technology that we have, at the end of the day, as our chair said, I agree, this is a business and we need to make sure that we are on top of it. Making sure that at the end, the user, the customer, which is the student, or the student or the person that's coming back for certificate programs or whatever that we offer, can utilize technology. And I think you've done an excellent job here in doing that and making sure they were prepared for the future. It's just weird because I have seen from where people would walk into all of our campuses and register, to now nobody goes in and registers, they do it all on their phones and everywhere else. And I think that shows how we have evolved as a college. I am always saying to Dr. Williams that many of you never hear, is that either we're going to be a slow-moving ship or we're going to be a fighting ship like the Navy has. You know, they can turn fast and you're going to get hit. We're not going to get hit starboard side because we can't turn and respond quickly, right? And I think this is a very good sign of us being able to respond quickly and being able to get to what the end user needs. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, absolutely. And the trustee butts.
Last comment, sorry. I know everybody had a quick word, but Dr. Renard, thank you very much for the presentation. So I would just encourage the team to push very hard. This, you know, when you're talking about IT governance and things like that, it's not sexy, right? But it's, it is, it is everything. It's the backbone, it's the infrastructure, balancing the priorities of every department where their priority should be the absolute top one, right? It's tough. So just continue the hard work. It was great getting into it and seeing what you guys are doing, and I wish you the best of luck as we continue because it's such a vital part of the college. So thank you.
Yes, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, trustees, for your great comments. And for Dr. Renard and team, I think a lot of the changes that are being made are system policies, processes. And I do think we need to go after more progressive technology and things of that nature. I would strongly advise that we make sure that the faculty are represented on the governance team. You may have stated it, I just didn't hear it, but I think you do need to have some faculty members on there.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hard act to follow, but we know Mr. Turtle can do, can do it.
What you don't know is yesterday Jesse said, "Great, I'm going after Pat." He sure did.
Doesn't matter, he comes with his collection.
Thank you, Dr. Renard. But we couldn't do what we do down here. Trustee Kidwell, trustees, Dr. Williams, thank you for allowing me to be here. We have just concluded the foundation's fiscal year. To remind everyone, the fiscal year for the foundation is April 1st through March 31st. Going to go through just a little year in review. But before I start, you have, might have noticed, immediate past Chair Steve Shepherd is from our foundation board. You see him at trustee meetings, you see him at basketball games and softball games and Leibner Ratner and the Palladium. Steve has a quiet leadership quality that I admire, and he has been a great mentor to me. So Steve, thank you so much for being here. I also want to give a shout out to marketing and strategic communications and our grants office. Those two offices, along with the foundation, make up Institutional Advancement Division, the smallest and the mightiest division at the college. I have some of my colleagues here. Anybody from Institutional Advancement? Can you please stand up?
No, I'm ready. Nice.
I love St. Petersburg College. We all love St. Petersburg College. And we're all fundraisers, we're all engagement officers, we're all recruiters, we're all security officers. I know Dr. Williams is sending phishing emails to Pat Renard. So, you know, this is a collaborative effort. So what I'm going to be talking about is our collaborative effort. So this past fiscal year, our community, our faculty members, our staff, our donors, our friends, our corporations, our foundations have helped the college raise $7.3 million this year. So we are continuing on that trend of fundraising above $7 million. And this has been just an amazing ride to be able to fundraise for this college. So I'm very, very proud of our team. They've worked very hard at getting out into the community, talking about the college. And it's been just a pleasure to be able to kind of really make this a sustainable model for fundraising. And as we continue with our quiet phase of our campaign, moving towards 2027, this is the kind of activity and kind of the support we need from our community. So I'm very proud of our team. This year, we raised almost $500,000 for our Titan Fund, which is our unrestricted fund. Now, I'll do the little caveat. We had a planned gift, an estate gift, from Joy Bennifield. Bill Foster was the trust attorney on this estate. Joy is a previous employee of St. Petersburg College from our finance office. Thanks, Mike Meigs. Where's Mike Meigs? A little sleuthing out of who our, who that donor was. So that's why that Titan Fund is a little higher than usual. This year's goal is 250,000 for our Titan Fund, and then our overall goal is 7 million. These numbers are fundraising numbers. So these are accounting numbers, and then we have accounting numbers. So we have our kind of accounting side, and then we have our counting side. So these numbers include estate gifts, they include cash gifts, they include pledges. So when a donor says, "I would like to make a $25,000 gift, and here's my pledge, I'm going to pay that pledge over five years," we count that entire amount for the counting part. And then as those gifts come in over the following five years, we don't count them. them, but we account for them in our revenues. Again, Mike Meigs figures all the, the accounting pieces out, and, and then we figure out all the accounting pieces. I do want to recognize some of our past donors. Melissa from Bank of America is here, and that was a big, huge gift that we had last year from Bank of America, the $1 million. So thank you so much. Our leader on loan, you're not going anywhere, right?
Not till September.
Okay. The Helios Foundation has, has been a huge contributor. The Helen Leslie Estate was $2.5 million from her estate alone, which included cash and property. So just an amazing woman. So amazing, we renamed the Legacy Society in honor of Helen Leslie. And if you are a part of that group, which means you have planned for a gift in your estate, you get one of these coins that say the Helen Leslie Legacy Society, Educate, Empower, and Engage. And so if you're a member of that group, Steve, I'm going to put you on the spot, do you have your coin? Yes, he does. So when you're a part of that group, you carry this coin around. And if, Steve always catches me without it. So we buy each other cups of coffee. So see me afterwards if you want to talk about planned giving. Rich Warsaw from our foundation board made a, a campaign contribution, as well as Mike Carroll, the Huff Family Foundation, the Spear Family Foundation, Duke Energy, all of you, and probably all of you. And if you haven't made a gift yet, come see me after the meeting. That was a joke.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't. All right. Engagement opportunities. We have really increased our engagement opportunities because the first thing you need to do is engage our community, our alums, our, our staff and our faculty, and really introduce them or reintroduce them to the college. So we've been able to do a lot of things this last year, and we're going to do even more next year. So this is just a, a sample of some of the things that we've been doing. Some of these are new. SPC Day was brand new last year on our Gibbs campus. We're going to be doing SPC Day again on September 12th at the Clewder Campus. And the plan is to progressively go through our campuses as we move towards 2027. And then 2027 to celebrate the 100th, it'll be a county-wide celebration. And my goal is to have everyone in an SPC T-shirt on that day, September 12th, 2027. So we're starting to do a little more alumni events. Nathan Stonecifer at Green Branch is going to be hosting us in June. We did a alumni event at one of our baseball games, and that picture is Mike Carroll, who is an alum and a board member, throwing out the first pitch. Anytime we have a nice big gift that involves a naming of a space, we do a little gift announcement. So we've been able to do a couple of those. And most importantly, we're out in the community, meeting one-on-one with community members, alumni, introducing or reintroducing, listening to what their passions are and matching those passions up with the passions of the college and missions of the college. So the impact of all of those engagements and all of those donors to the college, over $4 million this past fiscal year, which is just an amazing, amazing impact through scholarships and through program support. Items like athletics, our summer bridge program, our college for kids program, the food pantries, our fame program, Women on the Way, the College of Nursing, College of Education, the College of Business. I could literally just list everything we do. And all of these donations from the $4.1 million goes to support all of those efforts. So our mission is to support the college, and that's why we're here. And I think it's been really impactful that the trustees and the college and the foundation board really have coalesced and are growing all in the same direction. And the, the board social that we're doing tomorrow night and the integration of this, of you all with our foundation board, along with the, the rest of the college, I think has really been the key to our success and is going to continue to be the key to our success. I have a video I want to show you before we go into any questions. I missed it in the presentation, but I sent the link to Rebecca, and I'm not sure if she's going to be able to. The video is a, a thank you video from our donors and scholars.
It is an amazing institution with countless examples of success for what they do and how they have once again changed the course of people's lives. The connection between donation and recipient is so powerful. You want to know that you are really making a difference.
I could have gave it to any other donation, but I feel like I had such a great experience at SPC. The staff and the board members at SPC helped me achieve my goal. And why not get back to the institution that has helped you a long way and helped you get to where you're going to be?
I'm just grateful to them. They don't have to do anything, and they do, which is, which is beautiful. And that's something I hope I can win it, and it's a very inspiring thought. Thank you.
I want to tell the donors, thank you very much. This is a great opportunity. This past few years have been very tough on me. I was at my lowest point. And if I didn't have the RISE program, I wouldn't have been able to go back to school and actually be able to accomplish a goal that I had set forth since me joining SPC at 18. And I'm 41 now.
It meant everything because the only other option was to go in thousands of dollars in debt. Being in this program, I am able to better set up my life for the future. Not only to get into an institution where the tuition would be cheaper, but would be essentially free, was a blessing.
When you share and you give and you see the faces of the recipients and you learn about how the recipients of the scholarships have changed the course of their lives, how do you beat that?
By having someone else achieve their goal after you've already achieved yours. I mean, I don't, I don't feel like it's any better feeling.
Beginning of the rest of their lives. And what joy is greater than helping somebody begin the rest of their life and supporting their dream come true?
A couple more things to add for any questions. We'll have three new board members joining the board on Thursday. We'll also be giving Bill McLeod emeritus status as a foundation board member. So I wanted to make sure we acknowledged Bill McLeod. We have a, a resolution that we'll be giving him, and that will bring us to three emeritus status board members. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
The work, yeah, the work stands for itself. Thank you for all you do. I think bringing the boards together has been a goal of yours, and it's happened. The reception tomorrow night will be a big step. I, that's all I got.
Jesse, I just wanted to say thank you and to Dr. Williams as well. Since you've come on board, I think, I think we've come a long way in bridging the gap between what we do here as an institution and making sure everyone in our community understands that. We have a long way to go still, but telling the story, being out there every single day, making sure that what we do is applicable to everyone, not just alumni, not just those who know somebody who went to St. Petersburg College, although there's plenty of those out there. But what's most effective is our story and making sure people understand what that is and that they can have a huge impact, not only on students, but on Pinellas County specifically, since most of our students stay and work here when they're done. And so thank you for your work there. And I know Dr. Williams has been out there just as much as you have, banging the drum for what we do. And the proof is in the pudding. I think there's some, we've had some huge success, and it's exciting to see where we go from here.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't even want to go on with the rest of the meeting now. This is, we are at the consent agenda. We may have some discussion at this point on the equity report. If, if so, let's, let's discuss that now, if there are any questions or if Dr. Williams has anything to go over.
For the trustees, I did send you the info on the equity report and the state's memo to me with the short notice. I did not know if there were any comments or questions. We're doing better in our employment, but we have some work to do. But I just wanted to make sure I brought it out so that if there was a comment that needed to be made.
And it is due, it's July 1st.
It's due, it's, the, that section is due May 1st.
May 1st.
The report is due July.
Yes.
The consent agenda.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. The board was provided informational reports on all our various organizations. So there are no board trustee rules changes. And we are at the point now where we have our president's report.
All right. Thank you so much. We have 18 days left in the session. So we have 18 days to continue to rally and tally, to make sure that our information stays in both the House and the Senate. Right now, for the Florida college system, we still have $100 million in recurring funding in both the House and Senate for the Great 28. We're hoping to keep that in there. There's still some work to be done on the college system joining the health insurance plan. I believe both the House and Senate are in favor. However, we're trying to work out what the expense would be should we move the system into the state plan. And so we have 18 days to try to figure that out, or we may have to spend the time off session to work on it for the following session. But it is still top of mind at this point. We just don't know where we're going to land. I'll be sure to keep you posted. As trustee Gibbons stated, St. Petersburg College's legislative request are still, is still alive and well in both the House and the Senate. And we'll continue to move along the lines of what we can with what we have. So Capital Cities should be joining us in May to bring us the outcome of all of the policy and bills. Many of them have undergone many changes. So some of the concerns that we've had earlier have already been sort of revised in many ways. Not all of them, but some of them. So once session is over, we'll bring you the total outcome of the policies as well as our financial move. Next, I think it's this week, Rebecca, we're, are we meeting with Pinellas County Schools, the tour?
On Tuesday, next week.
Next Tuesday. We've been working closer with Pinellas County. The superintendent has been very open and collaborative. And this session, we're taking a group of SPC faculty, staff, board of trustees, on a bus tour of Pinellas County's new programs. And then in the fall, they're coming to us to see our programs. So for two reasons. One, we, we want to not duplicate as much as possible when we, when we don't have to. But also, I think it's important for both systems to come together and look at what we're offering, where we're headed, and what we're doing. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Zemack for the work that her team has done with Pinellas County Schools. Our biggest enrollment growth has been in that area, in our, our new students from the school system. I want to thank you for that. I believe, Jesse, it was two weeks ago, we had the first executive, the president executive advisory meeting with C-suite level CEOs of Pinellas and Tampa to really talk about how we can better invest our time and talent on what is coming down the pipe when it comes to new jobs. We want to make sure that we're top of mind when those organizations are coming up with new positions and new opportunities to make sure that we are offering the training. And out of that meeting, we were supposed to be there for two hours. I think we were there for almost four, four and a half. And we had a lot of discussion about how they can help us with videos and classroom visits to talk about the new work, the new world of work, and what opportunities are out there and how SPC can remain relevant. We talked a lot about the need for transformation and nimbleness, as Dr. Renard talked about with IT, and our ability to do a better job of pivoting in the classroom, in, in how we teach, and how we support our students. And so I'm looking forward to bringing them on campus and moving forward. I think that Jackie, Dr. Skrid, Jesse and others have been very involved in, in making that happen. So very, very pleased with that. It is almost time for us to start on our new three-year strategic plan. This year is the last year of our current strategic plan. We had a lot of big goals. COVID hit right there at the beginning of the start of the plan. And so we're going to use the fall forward to start working on our '24, '25 through '26, '27, I just can't believe I'm saying that, strategic plan. And so for the board of trustees, we'll be bringing you on board of that as we get, as we get started. I am extremely excited about graduation. It is my most fun time of the year. I really miss not being able to call names, but the handshaking can be really painful. So we're going to do the elbow touch this time. We have made some adjustments to the graduation agenda with fewer speakers. If you recall, the last May graduation was like three and a half hours. So we're working on making that more closer to the two-hour deal. We won't have as many students walking across the stage. If you recall, we were catching up from 2021, 2022 and trying to catch up those students. So this graduation will be at the TROP, and we're excited about that. And we look forward to each and every one of you being there to celebrate the milestone of our students from the good work of our faculty and our support staff to get them across the stage. And Mr. Chair, that is my report.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting date will be May 16 at the Epicenter, which is where I went this morning by accident.
Trustee Gibbons.
Trustee Gibbons.
Campbell family. George Campbell passed away, and many of you know Judge Campbell. And as you said, George was a good member of this community, helped St. Pete College and a lot of groups in this community. So please pray for their family as well.
Do you have the information on that, trustee Gibbons?
I do.
Okay.
I'll send, I'll send it to you as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Cole.
I apologize for this being delayed, but I think we should all congratulate trustee Gibbons on his appointment to the FAMU Board of Governors as well.
No, I was allowed to say that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That is great, trustee Gibbons. Congratulations.
Exactly. So I believe that after this meeting, we'll be meeting with the trustees and the individual groups.
Yep.
Okay.
We will. This meeting is adjourned.